... to order at this time. Let's start with roll call.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Banks.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Deschler.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
And Councilmember Persons is absent. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda in front of us. Looking for a motion on that agenda? Brendan?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, thank you. Nancy?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right. We have a consent agenda in front of us. I will read that into the record at this time. That is approval of the minutes from the following meetings, including work session from August 20th, 2019, and the work in the city council meeting on August, same date, August 20th. And approval of a list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in her office. And then approval of a resolution accepting the following donations. $500 from Children's Music Academy for Becker Park. $7,500 from VFW Post 494 for recreational programs. ASL assistance. That is...
It's for hearing.
It's for a hearing.
Yep.
That is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion? Nancy?
I'll make a motion, but I just had a question. What is ALS recreation? Because that's a great amount...
It's American Sign Language. It's ASL.
Oh, it just got transposed in the thing here. Okay, that's great.
Okay.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Did I do that right? Consent agenda.
Yes, that's correct. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Julie, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Hot mics tonight. All right. Next is open forum. We do have a few people wishing to speak during open forum. This is a time when you can address the council. People have three minutes and, or roughly three minutes, to say what they'd like to say. We have a... The first person is Melody Hanson. She's been with us for a couple of years. She comes about this time of year, so welcome.
Couple of years. I'm you, sorry.
Welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you. Mayor Adams, city council staff, and viewing audience. My name is Melody Hanson, and I am a Crystal resident residing at 5624 Nevada Avenue North. I'm here tonight as program director for the Robinsdale Redesign Family Service Collaborative. And I'm here to share information about our annual diaper drive that will be starting tomorrow at the Crystal Community Center and run through October 4th. We will have a pack and play set up there, and we will be collecting new and open packages of diapers, pull-ups, and new packages of wipes. And we do this to repurpose them and redistribute them to families in need. And the need is great. One in three families with children under five struggle to provide adequate diaper changes for their children. So one of our redesign programs is the Helping Us Grow HUG program, where we have active connections to families with young children. And they actually were the ones that told us this is a need. And so we did some research and found out that there's a Diaper Bank of Minnesota and a national chapter. And the national chapter encourages the local chapters to work with the governor to proclaim the last week of September as national diaper need awareness. So I want to personally thank the city council, the staff at the Crystal Community Center, and all the residents who have given, donated in the past, and encourage families, if you open your closets and your children have outgrown those diapers and pull-ups, please consider just donating them at the Crystal Community Center. To kind of give you an idea of our office, and we're one program of the Diaper Bank of Minnesota, we distribute 10,000 diapers a month. Of those 10,000, and we're going to exceed that this year, of those 10,000, one-tenth or 1,000 a month go directly to Crystal residents.
One-tenth?
So the need is great, and I want to thank again you all for the opportunity to share this annual event for the community to rally and come together for our youngest citizens, and also just a nice way to send a message to our families in need that we care about them and we know what to do. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
You really do.
Any questions?
Yeah.
All right.
A question now.
Yeah, go ahead Nancy.
People are interested, and I'm glad you also emphasized that even if the package is open, that they can still donate those. And it's at the community center, and it's in a big box, right?
A pack and play.
Is it right by the, right by the registration desk or the information desk?
Yeah, it is a pack and play, so like a normal little Safe Sleep kind of for infants.
Okay.
Yeah, and I neglected to say that if you are someone who needs diapers, to please contact me. And if, normally, we have all diapers sizes in stock. We run out of pull-ups once in a while, but we're more than happy to help families in need. And I can be reached at 763-504-4983, or melodie underscore hanson, H-A-N-S-O-N, at rdale.org.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
And the wipes, a reminder, the wipes need to be new sealed.
Wipes are new for health reasons. The diapers and pull-ups can be open packages.
All right. Great.
Thank you very much.
And it's through the month of September, correct?
So we will start tomorrow, and the drive at the Crystal Community Center goes through October 4th.
Oh.
There also are ongoing drives at like the New Hope Learning Center.
Okay, great. That's right. You mentioned that earlier, too, October 4th.
Great. Thank you so much. Yeah.
So is there, because there's elderly people that need them too. So you have diaper, you would take diapers from senior citizens?
Sure, we get quite a few. The diaper bank program is really for infants, but HUG does take them, and we do have requests occasionally. And when we have some donated that we don't have requests for, we always give them to the food shelves.
Okay, thank you.
So they get them to families in need.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a great need, and the thing is, is that no federal assistance can be used on diapers or wipes. So it's kind of a catch-gate for our families.
It's the same with formula too, right? Or is that...
Formula, you can get through WIC if you qualify.
Okay.
But no one can get assistance with diapers. There were three needs that families told us. One was diapers. That came out consistently. One was Safe Sleep, so Pack and Plays and Cribs, and we work with the Safe Sleep Coalition for that, and then Children's Hospital, and then, of course, car seats. And I'm so excited that Crystal now is part of that car seat education program, so we're helpful, we're thankful for that help.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our next person is Bert Ord. He's here to talk about...
How would I talk to him?
Well, we can hold off for a little bit, if that helps. So Bert is here to talk about the future tax levy and Chapter 5 revisions. Are you planning on staying for the whole evening?
If, I'll be very brief.
Okay.
Be consideration.
That's fine. That's not what I'm worried about. I'm just wondering if it makes sense to hold this until we're talking about it? Or is it not...
Which one would you like first, Mayor?
Let's go with the tax levy.
Okay.
Thank you.
The tax levy is just simply as a taxpayer, council. This is in the paper here about New Hope proposing about a 10 and 1/2 percent preliminary tax levy. And one of my concerns, anecdotally, after listening to Mark Ray over time, is that it seems like every time we get a bid for something, it seems like it's the highest amount and it's the only one. And it's just like contractors just don't care. They're just going to bill it for what they want, and that's it. And I just don't want us to get into this system of always having to accept this thing, and I don't know what the Crystal has planned as far as their budgetary needs in the succeeding years, but boy, I don't want to get trapped into just paying the high buck, and then when everything falls down, what do we do? That ends that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I told you it'd be short.
That is short.
It was.
That is short.
Mark... What about the Chapter 5?
Hold on, one at a time, please.
Sorry. Mark, you have, did you want to speak to that, or is there...
Sure.
Because it seems to me that we've accepted a lot of the lowest bids that were presented.
Yeah, so any project over $175,000, we're required to go out for bid, and we can, we actually are required to take the lowest acceptable...
Responsible bidder. So while Bert's true, construction prices are going up, labor is absolutely hard to come by. But that said, we actually take the lowest bid, responsible bid for projects. And we know prices are going up and adjusting that as we put together projects, so...
You know, we do everything we can to try to come up with a lower price, and some of that is being tactful as far as when we're going out for bids and what have you. And, you know, we have projects coming up, and we will continue to use that practice to find the right time of year to do the bidding. So I don't have the same recollection as you, as all of them being one and very high. I know we've had a couple in the last year, but overall, in the last seven years, my recollection is we've had some good bids. We've had some things come in under as well.
Well, anecdotally, I can just point out that in 4.2, which is the property, the residences west of 81 or east of 81 by the airport, I'm seeing all kinds of for sale signs there, and I'm sure that was stimulated by the fact that we were completing the curb and street repair, which was the final part of our renovation. And this kind of suggests to me that, well, they have that burden. Now what if they get a little bit of extra burden? And what I know about economics is that often the price of something is always just that, when you get that edge, when you get just over the top of something, then everything just capitulates. And I don't want that to happen to Crystal. I want us to kind of stay pretty cognizant of budgetary requirements, even though I know nobody's going to treat us right with regard to bidding, even if it is the lowest bid. I don't want to say anymore, because then I think I'm taking up too much time.
Mayor, if I may, because Bert's kind of a downer.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Two things. First of all, one of our residents, one of our residents actually in the northeast corner of the airport is a city employee. He was actually able to sell his house this past year for more than he thought he could, and we think one of the reasons for that is the curb appeal. As Julie ran around talking to people, people are very happy with the final product. It is a facelift for the neighborhood. It shows the community's investing itself. And we do, anecdotally, Bert's here, word, know that after we do that project, we see a lot of building permits follow in the next few years, because hopefully, it's kind of the reinvestment is somewhat contagious. Second of all, we did a resident across from Welcome Park who was initially concerned about the closing of Welcome Avenue. He came and caught Brad Fortin in the park and said that one of the reasons he thinks his house sold so fast for what it did is because of the investment the city made in the park. So I think that's two easy examples of things that we're doing that are making a difference for our residents.
Right.
So we're going to end on that note.
And Bert, for your revisions on Chapter 5? Did you want to do them now? I don't care.
Yes.
It's fine.
Well said, Mark. Thank you. Again, to Mayor, Council, and Troy. I just noticed when I was reading this so-called happy reading, as Ann Norris identified, that it was really a lot more, you know, more reading than I ever expected. But I'm just curious about a few simple things in it. And I'll just mention, like on page 13, there's an Article 9, Table 3, there was a descriptor term that was supposedly under the TCPD format, but there was no indication if there was really a change there. The same thing, I was a little curious about this so-called, the requirements for parking that we may have as development occurs in our TCPD area. And it just seemed like, holy mackerel, are they going to be able to build all that in conjunction with whatever building it is? And then there's like yellow marks that are in maps and insetts that indicate the potential for streets possibly being added to the TCPD location. I didn't quite understand the full totality of that. And the real ringer for me was on page 8, Article 6, subsection 3, Part 6. There was a part in there that said, if something is really extraordinary, then the council has, like, can allow a variance of 10%. Well, I don't know about you, but when I use the word extraordinary, and then there's a limiter, 10%, it just seemed kind of odd to put those kind of in the same paragraph.
Was that in relationship to height?
Pardon?
Was that in relationship to height?
No, it says, it talks about kind of like something that's really enhances whatever, whatever they're trying to do. And that's it. Thanks. Thanks for your time.
All right.
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you.
All right. I think John's doing a, we're going to have a conversation on that later, so we'll have it at that time. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing nobody, we will close open forum and move on to our regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is expenditures, $25,000 or greater. We have, we have only three of them. I guess I'm lucky. Crystal for Energy and Environment for Home Improvement Program costs, $25,909. And then Pember Companies for Bass Lake Road Streetscape, $37,588. And Veet, is it Veet? Fight, I always do that wrong. Company and Contractors for Wenekapon Drudging, and that's $78,827 total. Disbursements of $25,000 or greater is $142,324.88. Are there any questions related to any of these? John?
I have to recuse myself from this vote. Just want to let the council know that.
All right, thank you, John. Any other questions? Not that that was a question, but any questions? All right. Looking for a motion? Julie?
I'll make a motion to approve the disbursements over $25,000 as read.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second? Brendan?
I second that motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 2, we don't have Dan Olson here. John is here to address the council relating to the ordinances amending Chapter 5. Welcome, John.
All right, thank you, Mayor Adams, council members. This is the second reading and adoption of the Chapter 5 amendments, primarily having to do with two new Town Center districts. The requested actions tonight are that second reading and adoption, and then also by separate motion, a resolution to approve the summary publication of the changes. So I do have the whole slideshow from when Dan did this presentation two weeks ago, but I think that we don't need to go through that all again, so I'm just going to quickly run through the process, how we got to this point. And I will have those other slides available, and I can try to answer questions that were raised earlier in the evening. But we'll get to that in a moment. So this is basically about adding two new zoning districts to the city, a new base district called Town Center. I will put the maps up showing where these are. And then Town Center Plan Development, which is an overlay district. The other changes are minor policy changes or clarification of requirements in other sections of the code. The Planning Commission and City Council have been reviewing and discussing these changes over the last several months. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 12th and recommended approval. The city council, of course, approved first reading two weeks ago. So tonight, again, your actions are to, requested to adopt the ordinance and to approve the resolution for summary publication. So this orange area is the area where these Town Center changes would occur. The important thing you know about this, it's basically everything within about a 10-minute walk of the Blue Line Station, the proposed Blue Line Light Rail Station of Bass Lake Road, that is not currently single-family residential. So it's a mixture of institutional uses, commercial, industrial, and high-density residential. And zooming in a little bit, the two zoning districts, the orange is the base district. Think of that as sort of the core. Basically, it's the properties that face Becker Park. And then the overlay is the area within the blue dashed box, and that's where the Town Center zoning rules would be an option for new development, or they can just continue to develop or build based on the current underlying zoning district, which is commercial, high-density residential, light industrial, and so forth. So with that, I think I will stop the presentation unless there are specific questions from the council. I did not have any preparation to answer Mr. Ord's questions, so I can try to do that on the fly, but we probably need him to restate what those questions are from that.
I think we can, I think he'd be happy to work with us on those at some point. No?
It's going to be able, really.
Okay. All right. Council questions at this time? Go ahead, John.
Well, John, can you answer that question when it comes to talking about extraordinary or 10%? Can you speak to that? Anybody getting an echo over here?
If I could get the code reference to look that up.
Page 8.
Page 8, Article 6, subsection 3, Part 6.
Bert's on it. I'm not seeing page, in page 8. 3B? Oh, there it is, yes. Okay, thank you. So if a particular plan development would provide an extraordinary benefit to the community, et cetera, the council may approve a density of up to 10% more than the maximum identified in the conference of plan. So this is kind of a general density bonus that is, the ordinance is granting authority to the council. I mean, Mr. Ord's right in that extraordinary can mean different things to different people, but ultimately, it is a policy decision. And so the ordinance is just teeing it up for the council to make that decision based on the facts and circumstances of a particular development site or development proposal. So that's exactly the way it's intended, is to create a way for the council to do that, and they would be able to make that policy judgment on a case-by-case basis. I do have one, I have these questions that I think I can answer.
Okay.
I have to put it on the overhead, the old-fashioned way, but having to do with the potential future streets, because this is something that, upon seeing this illustration in the ordinance, totally understand, if I can borrow that, zoom in. Thanks. Well, this illustration might sort of be a little bit of a shock. Let me just explain what this is intended to do. So part of the basic idea behind this Town Center ordinance is the market is changing. We all know that, you know, there's, the whole US is over-retailed, and retail properties are being converted or redeveloped for other uses all across the country. And in order to prepare our, have our ordinance prepare for those kinds of changes in the marketplace, one of the things that we need to be prepared for is that, over the long term, some of these big blocks of retail property might end up being redeveloped for something. We don't know what exactly. And the idea is, if that were to happen, and the developers wanted to kind of carve up these big blocks of land into smaller blocks, that obviously means new streets going somewhere. And so the intent of this illustration is to show with the yellow highlighting approximately where new streets would make sense in that scenario where, say, the Crystal Shopping Center site were completely redeveloped for something different. And the same is true, there's another illustration that shows the Hanson Court area just north of there where Minnesota Grinding is, and it's formerly known as the Time Saver's Building. I mean, that's a, it's a great light industrial use right now, jobs and so forth, but there's also a lot of underutilized land as part of that property. That property owner may someday decide that they want to sell it to a developer to do something different there, and the idea is that this is where the new streets would go through that big block if that kind of development happened. So this is, does not mean that these streets are going to happen. It does not mean that they will go in exactly these locations. It's intended to give our best guess as to where it would make sense to put those new streets if that scenario were to happen.
All right, thank you. I had a question. You know, when we went through, we talked about kind of limiting industry in keeping it kind of out of that, that central area. And as I reread it this time, I'm looking at some restrictions in industry in terms of location, which is fine. I mean, that brings us back kind of to the Hanson Court area, which I thought was kind of our intent. But then I noticed additional restrictions in terms of how high in, I don't remember, but I think it was square footage as well. And my question today or tonight is, why, why if we have it where we want it, do we want to restrict it even further? And I guess, I'm not sure who I'm asking this question to. But, you know, if we have, if we have some places that actually make sense as industrial in Crystal, you know, in that, in that area, in the TCPD, why don't we let it be what it is? And allow for the value of that to be, you know, at its highest opportunity, you know, for the landowner itself and for Crystal itself? Go ahead, John, if you can.
That's a very valid point, and it is one that staff shares that point of view as well. We talked a lot about the uncertainty with the market, and, you know, 10, 15 years ago, everyone was building Super Targets, right? Well, Target isn't really building Super Targets anymore. The market can change in a relatively short period of time. And so we wanted to write this to create as much flexibility and adaptability as possible. The only area where new development must follow the Town Center guidelines is this core orange area, the base district. Those are the properties that are directing, directly facing Becker Park. The, in the overlay area, and that's what this slide shows, new development has a choice. New development can occur based on the current base district. So for example, around Hanson Court or the Minnesota Grinding slash Time Saver's site, that could all be light industrial, traditional, job-creating, light industrial development. It wouldn't have to follow the Town Center rules. But if the market is taking things in that direction, it provides that option for new construction, new development in that, in that outlying overlay area. So in the areas outside of the orange, which is the base district, and all these overlay areas, again, new development can either follow the existing zoning. So in the case of Hanson Court in that area, if it's light industrial, it stays light industrial. Or if things are changing, they could do something that's much more like the Town Center stuff that we talk about in the ordinance. The idea here is to provide a choice, because we don't want our zoning ordinance to stay in the way of that type of development if that's where the market ends up, because this will likely take decades. This process, I mentioned, I think, two weeks ago, I mentioned 66 and Lyndale in Richfield. You can see what things look like with that gradual transition over time. We think that's probably the scenario that will play out here, and it will take decades. And so we, our ordinance needs to allow properties to move in whichever direction the market wants to take them.
So it's your belief that, that in this area, when it comes to redevelopment, if it is in the area of industry, they can remain with that light industry and still be able to do whatever it is they, they want to accomplish in that area? So you see it as a, as a, that is the part that gives them the versatility?
That is absolutely correct. For example, the Minnesota Grinding property, the area right here, along Douglas, across Douglas from where the McDonald's is, there's a kind of a big open area, a couple of acres at least. If they wanted to build a new, traditional suburban, light industrial building, that would be allowed. They wouldn't have to build something, you know, right up to the street with, meeting all the rules of the Town Center. They could just build something the way our current light industrial district would allow it. So they have that choice.
Okay, let me try to state my concern. Maybe it's unfounded, maybe it's not. When we go, when we have an area that's being redeveloped, oftentimes, it's a conditional use permit. My understanding is if we trigger the conditional use permit, that automatically puts it into the Town Center criteria, right? Not the, thank you, the TCPD. Is that, is that a good understanding of that or not?
No, just to correct it. So first of all, in any zoning district, anywhere in the city, an existing use can continue and be rebuilt indefinitely. That's commonly called grandfathering. In the TCPD district, the overlay district, the larger area, if it is new development, so we're not talking continuing existing use, but building something new or a major expansion of something that's there, they have that choice. They could follow the current underlying zoning. So for example, in the Hanson Court area, that's light industrial. They could still do that. This doesn't force them to do anything other than what the ordinance requires now for light industrial areas. Or they could rezone to PC, TCPD and follow the Town Center rules. But they would have the choice. There is nothing about this ordinance change in that large overlay area that would force them to do something different from what we currently allow.
Okay. All right, I think I've got it. I think I've got it. Just a point of clarification, our TCPD zoning that we've, we talked about, it is a, a less restrictive zoning requirement than what is currently there now, correct?
It's, I would say generally, but it's restrictive in different ways. So it regulates different things. It is more of a form-based code, so it talks more about, you know, the buildings are supposed to be closer to the street, parking in the back. It's what's commonly called a transit-oriented development, but it, it works with or without transit, is the idea. So it, it is more prescriptive in terms of the layout and design, and it's kind of a different mix of uses from the, the light industrial, the current light industrial zoning.
Or even retail, for that matter, right? Okay. Yeah, I guess I started focusing on, on the restrictive pieces of it, but I think all in all, it's, it's, it takes that commercial property, whether it be industrial, retail, it kind of makes it, I think, more valuable as far as what can be done with it. Okay, I think I have my questions answered. Anybody else?
If I might just.
Sure.
If I might just add, the language that I talked about last time about adding language regarding adoption of the updated zoning map to reflect the new district, I just wanted to point out that is at the end of the, of the ordinance that's before you, so that was included.
Okay. All right.
Nancy has something.
Nancy? Go ahead, Nancy.
Okay, to make a motion?
Yes, it is.
Oh, Julie, you want to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Never mind, Nancy.
There you go.
Julie's got this.
This is board four, Nancy.
Right on, right on.
Oh, here we go. We've lost control now. Julie?
I'll make a motion to revise Chapter 5 of the Crystal City Code.
Thank you. Looking for a second? Nancy?
I'll second.
Thank you.
You want me to keep going?
No. Last chance for questions, seeing none. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. You may keep going.
I will make another motion approving summary language for publication of, of the ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Nancy? All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Our next item on the regular agenda is in relationship to a memorandum of understanding with law enforcement labor services. We have Kim Terrace here to address the council on that. Welcome, Kim.
Thank you. I have a fancy slide for this, so as well as talk to you about this.
You can.
We have a request before you tonight to approve an MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding with our local law enforcement services, Local 44, which is, covers our police officers. If you'll recall, the city council approved a two-year agreement for 2019, I'm sorry, for 2019 and 2020 with LELS. However, there was a re-opener in the agreement for the sole purpose of negotiating the employer's contribution for 2020 towards group health insurance premiums. And our health insurance premiums for 2020 were set to increase by 38.5%. However, due to our participation in an insurance pool, we, we have a rating cap in our agreement, and so our increase will actually be 13.5% in 2020. So as in past practice, the city and the employers, employees are sharing in the increased costs, and we did meet with them and negotiated these contributions, and the MOU was approved by the union and is signed before you. The 2020 preliminary budget does include sufficient funds for this proposed settlement, and it is also, well, I guess that second sentence isn't true yet, but it does include sufficient funds, and we are recommending that you approve this MOU.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Are there any questions for Kim relating to this item? None. Julie?
So insurance premiums were projected to increase 38% for one year.
Correct.
This is getting out of, totally out of hand.
Getting?
Even 13% is outrageous.
It continues. It's gotten there a long time ago.
Well, yeah, it continues. That's a good way to move. I mean, it's like our backs are against the wall. That's how I feel.
It's, I mean, it's, as you know, it's a nationwide problem.
Yeah.
So. But we do what we can to keep costs down. We do offer three different types of health insurance plans, and we do participate in an insurance pool, which does help us significantly.
Quite a bit, it looks like.
Yep.
Well, that was my, it was just a statement more than a.
Yeah. Well, I think we all kind of had that.
Gasp.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, we had what? One year that it was barely over double digits, and that's the best we've seen.
Yeah.
Brendan?
I don't have a question.
Go ahead.
Are we ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. A motion to approve the MOU with Law Enforcement Labor Services, Local 44.
All right. Thank you. I'll second that motion. Any other questions? Last chance, seeing none. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Now, you want to move on to the nonrepresented employees, please?
Sure. Now, this one is a little different because we do include the 2020 wages and benefits for the nonrepresented employees. So the labor agreements for all three unions, Local 56, which is our police supervisors, Local 44, our police officers, and Local 49, which is our public works employees, call for a wage adjustment of 3% in 2020. And we are also recommending a 3% increase for our nonrepresented employees of the city of Crystal. The percentage increase is, is consistent with internally among our bargaining units, as well as with wage settlements and other metro area cities, and is consistent with council direction. And then related to health insurance, it is the same insurance that we just settled with our Local 44, and you approved. The city does have a longstanding practice of providing the same health insurance benefit package to all of its employees. And again, the city and the employees are sharing in the increased cost of the premiums. The 2020 proposed budget does include sufficient funds for the proposed wage and benefit settlement, and we do recommend approval.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Julie? Go ahead.
Well, I love all the employees here. You know, the union people, if they get a 3% increase, they don't really see as much because they pay union dues. But nonrepresented employees that are not in the union, they don't pay any union dues, right?
That's correct.
So really, when they get a 3% raise there, and I think in my mind, the way I see it, they get more of a raise because they're not having to shell out money for the union.
I don't know.
Well, we do have, union members do have the option to opt out.
Okay, okay.
Isn't, isn't the union dues fixed and not changing according to the benefits?
It doesn't.
I don't understand.
Right, it doesn't according by salary, but the thing is, they're still paying out something every week or month or something in their payroll. I've never been in a union.
They, we do have, and there's a national law that does allow people to opt out and pay a fair share if you're a union member.
Yep. Yep.
Thank goodness for the unions, because they just put forth a good collective bargaining agreement. So go, so thank your union representative.
So, yeah.
I guess in my mind, I was just thinking if nonrepresented employees got like 2.85%, and union members got 3%, it all kind of washes out at the end.
For one year, but if you continue to do it, they'll be punished for it.
Okay. Well, that's what I had to kind of think through. I'm not trying, but, you know, if it would save $100 a year for Crystal taxpayers, you know.
I understand that. Yep. It's just, they're kind of separate issues, and I just didn't want to get it confused.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not trying to hurt them in any way.
No, I know you're, you don't have that kind of hurt.
And the city does have, like I said, have, has a good history of maintaining that.
I think that's true of all places, yeah.
I would caution against doing that or breaking that pattern, because then you may see an additional union.
My utility bill will go way up, is what you're saying.
That's up to you. That's up to you.
No, it was just a, just a fleeting thought, not a big deal. I'll let it go. Happy with 3%.
Is that a motion?
All right. Looking for a motion. John, go ahead.
I'll jump on this one. I make a motion to approve the 2020 wage and benefits for nonrepresented employees.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a second? Nancy?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. There's only one on that one, correct? Yep. The council will consider a resolution commending Utility Superintendent Randy Klepper, and at this time, I will read that into the record. Now, Randy's not here because he's shy. That does not mean his, we appreciate him any less. His, his work is just outstanding. Let's, let's read the resolution before I dribble on here. The resolution is commending Randy Klepper, whereas Randy Klepper started with Crystal Utilities in 1983, being promoted to Utilities Lead Worker in 1989, and in 2002. Randy was promoted to Utility Superintendent, and whereas Randy's knowledge and understanding of the city's sanitary sewer collection, water distribution, and stormwater management system is extensive, and whereas Randy is recognized by his peers and coworkers for his knowledge and experience. Whereas in his years of service, Randy has frequently been recognized for his excellent customer service and going above and beyond his routine responsibilities for assisting others. And whereas in recognition of his dedicated service, Randy Klepper receives the American Water Works Association Minnesota Section 218 Operator's Meritorious Service Award, and whereas Randy Klepper will retire as the city utility superintendent on September 28th, 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Crystal City Council, that Randy Klepper is thanked and commended for his years of dedicated service to the city and the citizens in wishing a long and healthy retirement. Potentially approve this third day of September 2019. All right. Looking for a motion on that. Let's start there. Nancy?
I would like, I would love to make a motion and to adopt the following resolution to commend Randy Klepper. I started to read the number, and I realized it wasn't complete.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a second? Julie?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
I just have one thing for Andy.
Yeah, go for it. Julie?
I've said this story maybe a couple times over the years, but whenever somebody like a resident or a business or somebody in another community says something really positive about employee of Crystal or City Crystal, I always get kind of, my heart kind of swells with pride. And years ago, when I was selling uniforms to the City Minneapolis Utility Department, and we buy our water from Minneapolis. And I remember one time when a bunch of them were in getting outfitted, and they were saying, you know, you, Crystal, you have the best Utility Superintendent that Randy got. He is by far the best that we've ever dealt with. And I, I just, I'll never forget that comment or compliment for him, and I've shared it with him before, and it was Tom at the time, but.
Right.
He must have really, really did a spectacular job in that world, you know, that I don't live in, but, yeah, I was always kind of proud of that, so.
Yeah.
I think we were really blessed to have him, and I wish him the best.
Yeah, we are blessed to have him. You know, we had some pretty major issues a while back in terms of our water supply, and, you know, behind the scenes, it was, it was he who was, you know, really in there working to kind of make the sinkholes and Robinsdales go well, as it were. So, you know, between, between dealing with just an amazing, amazingly large crisis and doing it elegantly, and, and his customer contact, I have neighbors that come up to me and say, yeah, you know, do you know this person? Of course I know this person, yep. And he's able to spend the time, he's got the patience for the people who don't really understand what's going on. He even did that with me. You know, how come my road is rising eight inches? You know, well, it's because of this, this, you know. Just, just he had a way about him to just be patient and.
And calming.
And calming, yeah. Very matter-of-fact, so, yeah. Good thing is, we have a lot of workers who have worked under him and have gathered a lot of his knowledge, so I think that's going to be a very powerful thing in our continued success in Crystal. All right. That is done. Any other comments? Thank you. That is it for our regular agenda. At this time, I'm going to read a couple things for our announcement session. The city of Cris, excuse me, the city council will hold its next work session on September 12th at 6:30 PM in the conference room at City Hall. Citizens input time will resume September 17th at 6:00 PM in Conference Room A at City Hall. The next council meeting is Tuesday, that same date, 7:00 PM, council chambers at City Hall. Crystal Business Association will be meeting September 18th at 8:30 AM in the community room. And congratulations to our Senator Rest and our Representative Mike Frybaird, who are named legislator, legislators distinctions of their work to assist Minnesota cities during their 2019 legislative session. So that's awesome. Local organizations are also invited to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Contact staff for more information on that. City council meetings and work sessions are open to the public. You're welcome to attend, or you can view current, or view previous meetings online or listen to them there as well. I think I had another one. Recycling, we have, our Crystal Environmental Quality Commission has an event on September 14th. It's to recycle your electronics. There's a lot of free items that you can bring, like your computers, your hard drives, keyboards, cords, that sort of thing. There are also opportunities to drop off some of you, some of your CRTs, your monitors, tube TVs. There's a slight fee for some of those items, but that's a, it's a great option to have that, that tech dump organization come and help us here at the Crystal Community Center, and that's at 4800 Douglas Drive. Did we have any others?
Did you give the date? I'm sorry.
I don't.
September, Saturday, September 14.
Yes.
From nine to 12.
I think I did. Nine to 12. I didn't give the time.
Nine to 12.
I apologize. Nine to 12, September 14. So that's also on our website.
And then the MAC Park.
Yep.
The 50th. Isn't it?
What's that?
The park?
Right.
The activities with Through Rivers Park District on, I think that's the 50th, isn't it, Nancy?
Fifty, one to five at MAC.
One to five.
Okay.
MAC Park, which is essentially about 59th and Douglas, or Regent. She's sent people to the wrong place.
Yeah.
59th and Regent. Metropolitan Airports Commission, that's what it stands for, MAC Park, and they're going to have all sorts of activities, free.
Yeah.
Yep. They had that event last year, too, didn't they?